Now, and first of all, if everybody can hear me, raise your hand so we can tell that we can hear each other or you can hear me. All right? And everybody has ordered Bernadette. I talked to you earlier, you should be fine. I see you now, Mr. Clark. All right, let's get started. Again, everyone, this is the North Miami Planning Commission meeting, Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021. This is a virtual meeting, and so we will have some procedures that we need to follow, and Mr. Held will go over that shortly with us. Go ahead and call the meeting to order. Madam Secretary, if you could call the roll for us, please.
Chairman Charles Ernst.
Present.
Commissioner Howard Tompkins. Commissioner Bob Peshaw.
All are muted.
Commissioner Bob Peshaw.
Here.
Commissioner Michael McDermott.
Here.
Commissioner Melton Goodwin.
Present.
Commissioner Bernadette Pierre.
Here.
Commissioner Kenny H.
Here.
Commissioner Edwidge Clark.
Here.
Commissioner Robert Besson.
Here.
You have a full quorum to proceed.
At this time, I would ask staff, have we had any amendments?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chair. Item 02-21 is being rescheduled to our next planning permission meeting on 4/6/21. So the only item for today is PC 01-21.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the meetings for the last meeting we had. And that is not the last one. I have December 1st, I believe there was a meeting after that, was there not?
It was canceled.
Oh, that's right, okay, so you're correct.
Through the December 1st.
Someone has a motion, please say who made the motion, please.
No, this is Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Mike, Mr. McDermott moves for approval of meaning of the amendments for the meeting of December 1st. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
I'll second.
Mr. H, a second to motion. Thank you very much, sir. Are there any communications from staff that we need to know before we start? Mr. Held, do we need to go over anything regarding procedures at this point regarding our, this virtual meeting?
I have a statement of procedures that I can read at this point, sir.
If you could, please, thank you, sir.
Okay. The North Miami City Council has adopted by resolution virtual meeting procedures for the conduct of public hearings and quasi judicial proceedings during the coronavirus pandemic and other public emergencies. They provide, and as stated in the public notice for this meeting, members of the public are invited to attend the virtual public hearing and provide oral or written comments on the matter. Comments which must include your full name and address may be provided in advance of the hearing via telephone or by sending an email to the publiccomment@northmiami.gov email address. Comments received by the advertised time and date, 10:00 a.m. of March 2, 2021, will be read into the record during the hearing. Comments received after the deadline will become part of the record but would not be read during the hearing. The procedure for each item is also governed by the Land Development Regulations. After reading the title of the item, staff representatives will be sworn and staff will make a presentation. The board commissioner staff may ask questions of the applicant or witnesses. Persons raising their, wait, the chair will then announce the opportunity for persons viewing the meeting to make live comments to the board or commission. Persons raising their hands using the go to meeting software within one minute following the announcement of the opening of the public hearing will be called upon by the meeting chair. Each person will be sworn and be given two minutes to state their name and address and make their comments. It's allowed by staff, the applicant, and the board or commission. Staff will then read public comments submitted by the deadline previously noted and stated the persons not appearing and making verbal comments. Public hearing will then be closed and the board or commission will then deliberate the matter and reach a decision, which may include approval, approval with conditions, denial, or continuance. And just to clarify, PC 01-21 is not a quasi judicial item.
Yes, yes.
The disclosures provided under item 1 there are not needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Held. Noted on the agenda is we do not have any continued public hearings, so we can move on to the public hearing portion on the one item we have today. Before I read the PC 01-21, I want to go ahead and ask the commission if there's anything that needs to be disclosed, any communications that was taken regarding this item with any other parties, not or within the commission itself. If anyone has discussed this item and feels they need to disclose it, please let us know at this point.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, that would only be for conflicts of interest, but for purposes of ex parte communications, those disclosures do not need to be made at this point. This is not a quasi judicial item.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thanks for that clarification. All right, so let's go ahead and present the item that we have before us today. It's PC 01-21, in ordinance of the mayor and the city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, adopting with changes amendments to the City of North Miami Comprehensive Plan to incorporate the adopted 16-year water supply plan and to strengthen coordination between water supply planning and local land use planning by amending the text contained in the future land use, infrastructure, the text contained in, infrastructure and the intergovernmental coordination and capital improvement elements, providing for transmittal of. And my screen is blank, hold on. Apologies. Get back to doing live meetings. Again, I'll go back to the point where I dropped off that the text contained in the future land use, infrastructure, intergovernmental coordination and capital improvement elements, providing for transmittal of the comprehensive plan amendments to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity and all other review agencies as required under Chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing for the adoption pursuant to Sections 163.3184 Florida statutes, providing for repeal, conflicts, severability, and effective date, and for all other purposes. May we have staff report, please?
Yes, sir. Let me share my screen.
Debbie, why don't we have you and any expert witnesses sworn in just for the perfection of the record? Marlene, could you go ahead and swear any, who's making a presentation today?
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to state is true? Say yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, let me see if I can share my screen. Hopefully the technology works for us today. This item is to adopt, make recommendations to the mayor and city council to adopt comprehensive plan amendments that were recommended through the water supply plan that was adopted by city council. The water supply work plan, we're not here for that item, that was already adopted via city council on 9/22 via Resolution 2020 R 104. Within that document, there are recommendations for comprehensive plan amendments, some of which we already had in our comprehensive plan. So what you have before you are some very limited changes to the comprehensive plan, primarily adoption dates of the water supply plans, updating resolution numbers. The only major substantive change was under the capital improvement element where we swapped out the previous capital improvement program with the most recent capital improvement program. We have to do that. So those are, that's the extent of the changes that we have to the comprehensive plan. So what will happen today is assuming that you all make recommendations to city council to approve, this ultimately will become part of our data and analysis in our comprehensive plan, the water supply plan will, and then, of course, the comp plan amendments go into our goals, objectives, and policies. We are tentatively scheduled for city council for first reading of the comprehensive plan amendments on April 13th. After that point, they get transmitted to the state because they are a part of the water supply plan. Once we get any comments back from the state, then we'll come back for second reading, so we don't have a specific date for that at this time. So this is the end of my presentation, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Debbie. Any quick questions to Debbie before we open the public hearing? If there's anything she needs to clarify for anyone? If not, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. The public hearing for this item, number PC 01-21, is now open. Anyone wishing to address this? I see we have some names listed. Please open your mic and speak up so we can recognize you. Marlene, did you get any, did you get any written comments regarding this item?
Yes, we received one written comment.
Mr. Chair, if I may make a point of clarification, we received several written comments, but they were for items that were not on this agenda, so we're only going to be reading the item that is pertinent to this agenda.
Correct. That is correct. So, Marlene, the item that you have does relate to this item?
Sure. Debbie, you might want to stop sharing your screen now.
Oh, let's see if I can figure out how to do that.
My name is Carmella Furman. I live at 12530 Northeast Fourth Avenue. I'm writing to you about the item PC 01. Okay, this is not in reference to the item that's on the agenda. This is the only one I received from Stephanie, Debbie.
Okay. Is that one from Cynthia Ordaz?
I only received one comment from Stephanie via email.
This is specifically about this particular item, they referenced it. Hold on a second. Actually, no, that was about the second item which has been continued, so my apologies.
Okay, so we have no other comments regarding this item. And I'm checking the chat room, and for the record, I have no questions that have been entered into the chat room, so I'm going to go ahead and close the chat room up and go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this item. Now, open the discussion to the rest of the planning board. Anyone wishing to speak on this, I can call each one by name, or if you want to just raise your hand and ask for an opportunity to make a comment or question staff. I'm scanning the screen here, and I don't see any hands going up for any comment on this issue. Mr. H, I see your hand up, sir. And open your mic if you could, sir.
I think, well, I'll make a comment after we vote on it. There's something I just want to get on the record, but it has nothing to do, the plan I thought was, the literature I read on it, and everything was pretty comprehensive. I was very impressed with it. But I just want to make a couple of statements after we vote on this.
Well, here's your chance now, sir, if you want to go ahead and.
Okay. What concerns me is the future. When I look at the population projections in the service area, so forth and so on, and global warming, we had talked about reverse osmosis, and we said that we couldn't do this because it was too expensive. And my comment, I think, in the future, or for the future, is that we cannot not afford to do it. I hope that the geologists and the people that say that we can use the Biscayne aquifer for however long we want to use it for, for infinity, is going to be there. What I see happening is that we did lose our wells on Northeast Eighth Avenue 20 years ago because of saltwater intrusion. Who's to say what's going to happen with the Biscayne aquifer and the Florida aquifer? Population is changing, changing dramatically. We're going to have a big influx of people coming in from New York alone. I read the city of New York is going to lose 300,000 people. State of Illinois is losing people because of high taxes. Same thing with California, they're migrating to Florida. And when you have that kind of a population shift, you're going to be using more and more water. Lake Mead is down by 40% with supplies, the water supply for Nevada. So my point is this, if a cruise ship can use reverse osmosis, then the city of North Miami should have a contingency plan in the future. We can't afford it now, but let's get it on the record, that we need reverse osmosis. I mean, who's to say with saltwater intrusion, if we're going to lose our water supply on the West Side? It's just a fact of life. Population growth, sea level rise, shortage of water, weather changes. You know, I gave years ago, I got a copy of the American Military Engineer every three months, and in that, I gave a copy of an article from San Diego, where San Diego, city of San Diego, California relies on our old plant saltwater destabilization to supply its citizens with adequate water. And we better take a look at that because, hey, we have technology here. You see the glitches we had this morning, or this afternoon, could happen in the future. And we did look at it in 2015, and they said we couldn't afford it. I mean, what I read now, yeah, and then we're basing a lot of it on conservation. Well, you know, conservation is great, but is it workable? Is it going to allow us to have a portable water in the future? That's my, that's my comment. And it has nothing to do with what I read here today, but I just like to get that on the record. I think it's important that our city elected officials look at it and see if there's a way we can finance it, either through federal grants, increasing, or go for an individual bond issue, not a bond issue like we did the last time, which was defeated. This is very important to our survival and to our growth and to our economic growth and to our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenny. I do know that there's, Debbie, maybe you can kind of, kind of correct me, or the county, the county wants, are they not wanting to try to override the local municipalities as far as how we control our water supply? And there's some talk about having all the communities kind of combine and sort of like setting up a rationing system. Have you heard anything about this as far as what the county wants to do and their plans?
No, sir. On a regional level, the South Water Management District governs on a regional level the water supply plan of the various municipalities, including the counties. And our plans, our individual plans via municipalities are our individual plans. So I haven't heard anything about that. That may be a question for public works for the time being now. They just released their water supply plan in October, which then ours was adopted in September. So they're still moving forward, as I understand it, with recognizing our own well system and our own water supply. We are required by Florida statutes, each municipality must have their own water supply plan at this point. So I haven't heard anything about some collective agreement or anything like that.
Okay, good. Thank you for clarifying that. All right, is there any other comments or any discussion, or Dr. Besson?
Okay, I did have the pleasure of reading through the agenda last night, well, three or four hours of it. It seems that we are very beholden to Dade County for approximately 30 to 40% of our water supply. The Winsome, now, because the Winsome treatment plant can only handle about 9.4 million gallons per day. Currently running about 7 to 8 million gallons per day. We are using water from Dade County to manage about 3 to 3 million gallons per day. They can break the contract at any time. There is no, there's no recourse. So we're kind of on thin ice with the county itself, near good graces, and have them meter out the water to us. There are two aquifers under Florida right now. There's the Biscayne Aquifer, which goes down to about 140 feet, give or take, 60 feet. And then there's the Floridian, I believe it's called that, that's the way it was spelled here, Floridian Aquifer, which reaches South Florida, all the way up into Georgia, South Carolina, Washington, Mississippi, and so on, Alabama, which is a much greater aquifer. It's actually an Artesian aquifer because there's a pressure head in that from the land laying over it. That's down about 1,000 feet. In this area, I think, down to 1,400 feet. There's a huge amount of water in there, probably would not be touched by salt intrusion, and that would be a possibility if we were to tap into that. I don't know what the cost factors are, effects, but we could use that water to supplement the Biscayne Aquifer water, and if the intrusion were to occur, which obviously sea levels are rising, I see it behind my house, again, the tides don't get as low anymore than we used to, would probably be protected. Also, Mr. H talked about reverse osmosis. It's not as complicated a scenario as meant to, as most people think, because you can buy one to put under your kitchen sink. Basically, it uses coils that are separated by certain sensors, it flows through under a pressure head. It filters out all the impure bacteria, it'll actually go down to viruses of 0.2 micron, and that can be used as well. The wasted water there is about 20% versus the cleaning process using lime, as well as other things at the plant right now, the Winsome plant. Plus, I don't think you have to use as much chloramines, which are not particularly good for the human body, which are found in the water supply, because chlorine is naked to the end user. It tends to disintegrate fairly rapidly. Chlorine attached to an ammonia molecule will sit in the water supply longer, protecting us from various biological agents. So maybe we need to consider in the future reverse osmosis, that could probably clean up the water very easily on the.
All right, everyone, let's go ahead and I'll entertain a motion for approval of this item and have it sent forth to the commission. I see, Mr. McDermott, you are motioning, you make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Goodwin, I second the motion. All in favor, we could do this by hand raise, or we could do a voice roll. However, I see everybody's hand. Ms. Bernadette, I'm going to have to ask you.
Yes. May I ask you to do a voice one, because on Zoom it's kind of hard to test everyone, so if we could do a voice roll, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Let's start. Mr. Tompkins, out of your votes, sir? Mr. Peshaw?
Yes.
Mr. H?
Yes.
Mr. H votes yes. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Besson, Dr. Besson?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott? I believe you said yes.
Michael, you're muted.
You're muted, Michael.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. And finally, Ms. Pierre, again?
Yes.
And I have a yes from Ms. Pierre. I believe that's all, and I vote yes, so it carries unanimously. All right, everyone, so that concludes everything that we have on here. The item will be moved on to the commission. So the next thing we need to find out is from staff, when we want to meet again. Yes, Mr. McDermott?
Yes. And I'm just sort of saying, you know, both Kenny H. and Mr. Besson had some very, very good comments, and I remember, like Kenny does, back many years, I think 15, 16, when we talked about the reverse osmosis. I would, you know, I would suggest that perhaps we move this along because this is the best solution at the moment, but we really need to call attention to the city council, that they need to really look at alternatives, because like, as like Kenny mentioned, I keep reading how many people are moving here. We have the mayor of Miami going on almost weekly, talking about what national corporation is coming here and bringing the employees with it, which is a good thing because of the growth, but then again, the burden and the strain on the utilities that they'll be using. So I think it may not be a bad idea to move the motion on to them, but draw their attention to that this is just really, in many ways, maybe just a stopgap.
Question to staff and to Mr. Held, we voted on this, ascended forth. Would it be permissible for us to add an additional request that they look further at future options that we may have to deal with any sort of?
Such as a reverse osmosis, yeah.
Yeah, such as a reverse osmosis or any other ways that we could perhaps keep our water supply up to standard and available.
I would suggest if you're going to do something, you do it by separate motion, just to express a sentiment on the commission on that issue.
Okay, so then we would have to draw up some language in here as a separate motion. How would that be added to this? This motion has already passed regarding this item.
That's quite all right.
That's quite all right.
The thing is simple, is the sense of the commission is that the city should examine reverse osmosis water supply for the long-term benefit of the city.
Most of that we'll put on the table, as Mr. Held has just said, we're recommending that the city look at, I wouldn't say alternative, but all. I wouldn't say alternative, but also look at reverse osmosis and the ability to find alternative means to keep our water supply fresh. How would that sound?
If Ms. Love can comment on that as well.
Yeah. The water supply plan itself says that one of the recommendations that the plan has in addition to the other conservation recommendations that we already do, the city is, they already designed the reverse osmosis plant. And, you know, Dr. Besen and I, you know, I'm sure that was a good sleeping material to, you know, help you get to bed, Dr. Besen. But it does say in there that they had designed it, and it's been set aside because of cost. Reverse osmosis is one of the ways of taking saltwater and, you know, making it into portable drinking water. So, but the plants are expensive, and it was set aside due to cost. The water supply plan is based upon population projections out to 2040 or 2045, I believe it is, and looking at, thinking about the future population of the city. And not just the city, but the water supply area. So they've taken into consideration the growth and how much water will we need for the future during that period of time. What Mr. Held is suggesting is that you do, if you really, really would like to move forward and emphasize that you would like to get them to rethink the cost and paying for it through the reverse osmosis system, your second motion should be to reflect that you encourage council to reconsider putting a reverse osmosis plant into our capital improvement plan. But again, you have to find the monies to do that. So that would be my only comment in that regard. So how you put your recommendation together is certainly up to you. And if you have any other questions?
If it's already listed in the comp plan, then we're being redundant.
Not in the comp plan, in the water supply plan. But remember, the water supply plan. Right, the water supply plan is the data and analysis for our comp plan. And it's also what governs public works through their provision of water through their water service area.
Right. So Mr. McDermade, what we're saying, I mean, they've already, they have it there to examine it. I'm not quite sure us having them reinforce that would, what you're asking.
You can make that recommendation to them because they adopted the water supply plan. It's really the cost that you may want, wish to reemphasize that you are fully in support of the reverse osmosis system and that you are recommending city council, you know, consider that in their capital improvements program.
Michael, do you understand that? You're fine with that?
Oh, sure. I understand what I'm saying. But I also know that these plans that are passed, sometimes they rely on staff heavily, which they should. But sometimes we need to call their attention to things beyond just what is buried in a report somewhere.
Could I make a quick comment or a recommendation, I guess?
Sure, Mr. Goodwin.
If it's simply a matter of cost, then we have border communities that are benefiting from our water sources. So why don't we simply have an assessment or some sort of a rate increase for these fantastic wealthy cities like Miami Shores, Biscayne Park, unincorporated Miami Dade? These, again, there's 13 square miles here. So those areas.
I understand where you're going at, but at this point, we don't, I don't think it's in our purview to address anything that's not in this, this plan. If we were throwing everything out, starting all over again with a new plan, then I think something like that we could, we could discuss. But at the moment, all we can do, I think, is to encourage what is already before us, and that's going to the state. And. Which is reverse osmosis. At least have them, you know, we want to call their attention to at least consider that.
Right. What I'm saying is that we include in there a way to help pay for these traditional costs of reverse osmosis in various communities that are not North Miami, city of North Miami boundary, city of North Miami residents.
Mr. H?
That would be, I believe, when we did the improvement for the Winston Water Plant, that was already included in the funding, or actually in the billing process, I believe. Like Biscayne Park, if I'm not mistaken, Mike, you might remember this, they pay 25% more for their water supply. And anybody that's outside the city, they pay much more for it. We did have a bond issue a couple of years ago that was defeated. It was, if you recall, I don't know, it was about 150 million, something like that. But encompassed so many other projects, so public works projects, and building new guard gates and this and that. I think at this point, Mike and Debbie had the right idea. Just let the city council know that we're concerned, and we believe that they should have a look, relook at the reverse osmosis plant. And let's just set that fire there, and then we can talk later on about how we want to fund it. If you want a separate bond issue, increase the water rates, so many other things that they can do. But I would just, just like Mike and Debbie said, just put that out there, that we recommend the city council look at incorporating or looking at redeveloping the reverse osmosis. I didn't mean to open up a bag.
That's quite all right, Mr. H. Thank you for further input on that. So, Michael, we will go ahead and, no, we are making a motion then that we are going to ask that they consider reverse osmosis as a means to enhance or as another means of providing water to the city. As simple as, simple language. All right, Michael, are you fine with that?
I'm fine with that, Charlie, sure.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
For each second, so all in favor, we'll do a quick voice count here, if we could, please. Ms. Pierre? Do you agree on that motion? Ms. Pierre? I'll come back to Mr. Tompkins. Mr. Tompkins? Yes, Mr. Tompkins, do you agree? Mr. Pashon?
Yes.
Mr. H?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yep.
Dr. Besen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Yes. And Mr. McDermade?
Yes.
Yes, and Mr., and I'll go back to Mr. Clark. There you are, Mr. Clark. Trying to find you on the screen.
Yes.
And I believe, Ms. Pierre, if you're still with us? Ms. Pierre, can you hear us? I need a vote, please. Yeah. Staff, we've lost Ms. Pierre. Either technical difficulties, or she might have left immediately, I'm not sure. Anyway, we do have eight votes for. And I vote for that motion to be added to what we're already sending the council. All right, so that passes and that will now go to the council as a motion to the item we voted on. All right. Having got all that out of the way, let's go back down here, go back down to the end of the meeting here. I need to find out if there's any committee reports from staff. Any old business?
Yes, sir.
New business?
I'm going to ask Jennifer Warren, Deputy City Attorney, to address our new business item.
So I did have the clerk to the board share with everyone the resolution adopted by mayor and council, which essentially keeps the status quo for the boards and commissions in the hybrid meeting format, meaning that you would have an in-person quorum at city hall with the remainder meeting from home, as well as staff, if they so choose, meeting from home. If you have any questions on it, I'm available to answer.
Is this ongoing? Do you anticipate this for the remainder of the calendar year? Or at what point do you think we may get back to a normal meeting state?
I suspect as vaccinations start ramping up and going underway, you know, especially as more of the general population has the ability to get those vaccinations, you'll see the numbers go down. And more than likely, mayor and council will reevaluate the meeting options for their meetings, as well as for the boards and commissions. Fingers crossed that, you know, we're able to get low enough numbers to have that discussion. But I've not heard anything for the near future.
All right, thank you, Jennifer. Next thing is to find out when our next council, our next planning commission meeting is. Marlene, can you give us a date yet?
Yes.
The April meeting?
It's actually April 6.
All right.
And I might as well give you the May date as well, because we'll have items for your May. That's May 4. And we have a busy, we have a busy few months coming your way. We have a lot of new development coming into the city, very exciting projects that are coming forward that you all will be seeing next month and May and who knows, maybe even June. But right now, it's pretty heavy duty. And so we'll look forward to you all seeing them and opining on the developments as they move through the review process and come before you.
All right, thank you, Debbie. Having no other new business, I'll call for motion. Yes, Mr. Held, I'm sorry.
Okay, I just wanted to do a quick confirmation of who is in city hall for the record. I have Mr. Goodwin, Mr. McDermade, Mr. Tompkins, and Mr. Ernst. Is Dr. Besen in city hall, too?
City hall.
Okay. And anybody else in city hall?
Michael?
Thank you so much for that, for the record.
Right.
Okay, move to adjourn.
Okay, Mr. McDermade moves to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
McDermade's second by Mr. H. Thank you very much, everyone. The meeting is now adjourned. We will see you April 6.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.